Good evening, welcome to the Board of Education meeting for Greeley-Evan School District 6. Today is the 12th day of August 2024. This meeting will now come to order. Will you please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance to our Flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Lemon, will you call the roll for us, please?
Director Azari.
Present.
Director Bentley.
Present.
Director Campos Pitsi.
Present.
Director Mash.
Director Matthews.
Present.
Director Norwood.
Present.
Director Sullivan. Five board members present.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. And I'll just let everyone know Ms. Mash is excused tonight. She is moving her daughter into a dorm at CSU. And so she's excused and Ms. Sullivan is feeling under the weather, though she may be joining us remotely if possible. So with that, I just want to give us a few announcements and welcome you again to our Board of Education meeting. We're glad that you're joining us and glad to see such a full house tonight and glad because this is the first day of school. We work all summer. I know a lot of you, I don't see a lot of administrators in the audience tonight. I know a lot of you have worked all summer and today's the day where we get our students back. And so we're very excited in this building and throughout our district to have our students back. And hopefully it was a good first day for everyone. I just also want to give a few shout outs and one of those is to our communications team for our backpack giveaway. This year we gave away about 5,000 backpacks, somewhere in there. We had, I think, 9,000 people show up a few days, about 10 days ago, I guess it was, a little over a week ago. And just a fantastic event. It's the 11th year that we've done this. It is one of the few things that you can go to and see so much of our district and so much of our community. And you see just the community that we serve and the need that exists in our community for backpacks and how excited our students are to get those backpacks, to get ready for schools. We had so many great sponsors from the community. I want to give thank yous to all of them for being such great supporters of the school district. Also, wanted to just update you on a little bit of news that happened over the summer. We don't have a lot of news that happens over the summer, but we did have some. And generally during the summer, we get our AP scores back and our students get those back. And then we know how many AP scholars that we have. And this year we have 166 AP scholars. Yes, somebody's clapping. Great round of applause for those. And AP scholars are not just people that take an AP test. You have to have gotten a three or higher on three AP tests to be considered an AP scholar. And it just seemed like a good time to talk about college readiness. We talk a lot in this school district about college and career readiness and we focus a lot on career readiness. And rightfully so. We are, as Representative Mary Young said just the other day, we are one of the leaders in the state in career readiness. We have, when they do tours and talk about career readiness, they come here to see our CTE Center. And that's very important. But we also, it's not an either/or, but a both-and, and we focus a lot on college readiness. And so 166 AP scholars, that is triple the amount that we had just about 10 years ago. Part of that is due to our ability to offer AP classes, our ability to offer concurrent enrollment classes and the ability to get students ready for college in that way. But part of that is just the encouragement of kids to take AP classes. And I see one of my favorite AP teachers here tonight and who goes and grades AP tests. And it's, our teachers do a great job, our counselors do a great job of encouraging students to take those AP classes. Students that might not think that they could be successful in an AP class. As freshmen, as sophomores, to take classes like AP Human Geography and AP Environmental Science and some of those AP classes that are designed to get kids exposure to AP tests. And so I think all of our comprehensive high school principals are here tonight and they might hate me for this after I say it. But today's the first day and schedules are still a little bit flexible. And so if you're a, if you are a, if you're a parent of a student who is a freshman or a sophomore and they have, they've been successful in eighth grade and in ninth grade and maybe the counselor at Greeley Central or Greeley West, Greeley at Northridge, they don't quite know your student yet. Email those principals and ask about how do I get my student into AP Human Geography? How do I get my student into AP Environmental Science or another AP class? And again, they might hate me for that, but this is how it happens, right? We need students to do that so that we, not for our sakes, but so that we have kids going to college. The students in this community have an incredible opportunity with Ames and UNC, with programs like Bright Futures and the Promise Program at UNC. They have incredible opportunities to go to college. And we need college graduates, not just this community, but this school districts. We hire every year over 1,000 college graduates. We also hire over 1,000 people who didn't graduate from college. We need, we hire a lot of people, but we need teachers, we need administrators and we need people to go to college to be not just engineers and not just nurses and doctors, but to be teachers. And so I want to encourage people to take advantage of the opportunities that we have in this school district with concurrent enrollment and AP classes and Avid. And one we're going to hear from tonight, ECA. So that's my last encouragement to you. I've talked too long, but I will, I will give it to our superintendent to give her honor roll.
Thank you, President Matthews, and thank you for all those comments. Very well said and very well spoken. And I have the opportunity to recognize a staff member tonight on my superintendent's honor roll who is also instrumental, she and her colleagues, with ensuring students are in career pathways and pursuing career pathways. And in this case, it's the career pathway of agriculture at Greeley West High School. And so I'd like to invite Alexandra Grimes to come up to the podium. You can bring supporters with you if you need to, Alex. I know you have some of them here tonight. Yeah, come up and give her strength and love as she gets recognized tonight. We learned, yeah. I love that you brought students with you tonight. I love that. I love that. Well, we learned in mid-July that Ms. Grimes, who is a vocational education teacher at Greeley West High School, that she completed the 20th Annual National Association of Agricultural Educators National Agri-science Teacher Ambassador Academy. And she did that in Lexington, Kentucky. This academy is a professional development institute where candidates learn about inquiry-based learning methods as well as learn how to draw on science that is already present in many agricultural topics. We're excited that Ms. Grimes is now a National Agri-science Teacher Ambassador. So she joins about 60-plus other teachers from the US, Puerto Rico and the US Virgin Islands who were selected this year to serve as a resource to other teachers in their home states and across the country to support those teachers in their professional growth and their development with agri-science. And so we're just so proud of you. And you can't have been teaching that long.
This will be your fourth.
Just your fourth, yes. Just her fourth year. So this is a Future Farmers of America, school-based national youth leadership development organization with a mission to make a positive difference in the lives of students by developing their potential for premier leadership. So the students you see here have on their FFA jackets. Very proud of you for representing tonight. And I want to recognize the students for being here with you, Ms. Grimes. And I want to thank you for your ongoing dedication to your profession and to helping grow other teachers. Would you like to say a few words?
One thing I would just like to say is that I am so proud to be a part of District 6 and bring these opportunities to our students and to parents and everybody. It's been an amazing experience and I hope to not only help my students continue to be the best for their future, but I'm also helped to help other teachers in our district because I feel like a lot of them could use it. So I'm so honored for this and thank you guys so very much.
All right. Congratulations to you guys. We're very proud of all that you do. All right, moving on, we need to approve our agenda. And that's an action item that will need a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District 6 approves the agenda as presented.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Not seeing any? Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Azari.
Aye.
Director Bentley.
Aye.
Director Campos Pitsi.
Aye.
Director Matthews.
Aye.
Director Norwood.
Present.
Director Sullivan. Five board members present.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. And I'll just let everyone know Ms. Mash is excused tonight. She is moving her daughter into a dorm at CSU. And so she's excused and Ms. Sullivan is feeling under the weather, though she may be joining us remotely if possible. So with that, I just want to give us a few announcements and welcome you again to our Board of Education meeting. We're glad that you're joining us and glad to see such a full house tonight and glad because this is the first day of school. We work all summer. I know a lot of you, I don't see a lot of administrators in the audience tonight. I know a lot of you have worked all summer and today's the day where we get our students back. And so we're very excited in this building and throughout our district to have our students back and hopefully it was a good first day for everyone. I just also want to give a few shout outs and one of those is to our communications team for our backpack giveaway. This year we gave away about 5,000 backpacks, somewhere in there. We had, I think, 9,000 people show up a few days, about 10 days ago, I guess it was, a little over a week ago. And just a fantastic event. It's the 11th year that we've done this. It is one of the few things that you can go to and see so much of our district and so much of our community. And you see just the community that we serve and the need that exists in our community for backpacks and how excited our students are to get those backpacks, to get ready for schools. We had so many great sponsors from the community. I want to give thank yous to all of them for being such great supporters of the school district. Also, wanted to just update you on a little bit of news that happened over the summer. We don't have a lot of news that happens over the summer, but we did have some. And generally during the summer, we get our AP scores back and our students get those back. And then we know how many AP scholars that we have. And this year we have 166 AP scholars. Yes, somebody's clapping. Great round of applause for those. And AP scholars are not just people that take an AP test. You have to have gotten a three or higher on three AP tests to be considered an AP scholar. And it just seemed like a good time to talk about college readiness. We talk a lot in this school district about college and career readiness and we focus a lot on career readiness. And rightfully so. We are, as Representative Mary Young said just the other day, we are one of the leaders in the state in career readiness. We have, when they do tours and talk about career readiness, they come here to see our CTE Center. And that's very important. But we also, it's not an either-or, but a both-and, and we focus a lot on college readiness. And so 166 AP scholars, that is triple the amount that we had just about 10 years ago. Part of that is due to our ability to offer AP classes, our ability to offer concurrent enrollment classes and the ability to get students ready for college in that way. But part of that is just the encouragement of kids to take AP classes. And I see one of my favorite AP teachers here tonight and who goes and grades AP tests. And it's, our teachers do a great job, our counselors do a great job of encouraging students to take those AP classes. Students that might not think that they could be successful in an AP class. As freshmen, as sophomores, to take classes like AP Human Geography and AP Environmental Science and some of those AP classes that are designed to get kids exposure to AP tests. And so I think all of our comprehensive high school principals are here tonight and they might hate me for this after I say it. But today's the first day and schedules are still a little bit flexible. And so if you're a, if you are a, if you're a parent of a student who is a freshman or a sophomore and they have, they've been successful in eighth grade and in ninth grade and maybe the counselor at Greeley Central or Greeley West, Greeley at Northridge, they don't quite know your student yet. Email those principals and ask about how do I get my student into AP Human Geography? How do I get my student into AP Environmental Science or another AP class? And again, they might hate me for that, but this is how it happens, right? We need students to do that so that we, not for our sakes, but so that we have kids going to college. The students in this community have an incredible opportunity with Ames and UNC, with programs like Bright Futures and the Promise Program at UNC. They have incredible opportunities to go to college. And we need college graduates, not just this community, but this school districts. We hire every year over 1,000 college graduates. We also hire over 1,000 people who didn't graduate from college. We need, we hire a lot of people, but we need teachers, we need administrators and we need people to go to college to be not just engineers and not just nurses and doctors, but to be teachers. And so I want to encourage people to take advantage of the opportunities that we have in this school district with concurrent enrollment and AP classes and Avid. And one we're going to hear from tonight, ECA. So that's my last encouragement to you. I've talked too long, but I will, I will give it to our superintendent to give her honor roll.
Thank you, President Matthews, and thank you for all those comments. Very well said and very well spoken. And I have the opportunity to recognize a staff member tonight on my superintendent's honor roll who is also instrumental, she and her colleagues, with ensuring students are in career pathways and pursuing career pathways. And in this case, it's the career pathway of agriculture at Greeley West High School. And so I'd like to invite Alexandra Grimes to come up to the podium. You can bring supporters with you if you need to, Alex. I know you have some of them here tonight. Yeah, come up and give her strength and love as she gets recognized tonight. We learned, yeah. I love that you brought students with you tonight. I love that. I love that. Well, we learned in mid-July that Ms. Grimes, who is a vocational education teacher at Greeley West High School, that she completed the 20th Annual National Association of Agricultural Educators National Agri-science Teacher Ambassador Academy. And she did that in Lexington, Kentucky. This academy is a professional development institute where candidates learn about inquiry-based learning methods as well as learn how to draw on science that is already present in many agricultural topics. We're excited that Ms. Grimes is now a National Agri-science Teacher Ambassador. So she joins about 60-plus other teachers from the US, Puerto Rico and the US Virgin Islands who were selected this year to serve as a resource to other teachers in their home states and across the country to support those teachers in their professional growth and their development with agri-science. And so we're just so proud of you. And you can't have been teaching that long.
This will be your fourth.
Just your fourth, yes. Just her fourth year. So this is a Future Farmers of America, school-based national youth leadership development organization with a mission to make a positive difference in the lives of students by developing their potential for premier leadership. So the students you see here have on their FFA jackets. Very proud of you for representing tonight. And I want to recognize the students for being here with you, Ms. Grimes. And I want to thank you for your ongoing dedication to your profession and to helping grow other teachers. Would you like to say a few words?
One thing I would just like to say is that I am so proud to be a part of District 6 and bring these opportunities to our students and to parents and everybody. It's been an amazing experience and I hope to not only help my students continue to be the best for their future, but I'm also helped to help other teachers in our district because I feel like a lot of them could use it. So I'm so honored for this and thank you guys so very much.
All right. Congratulations to you guys. We're very proud of all that you do. All right, moving on, we need to approve our agenda. And that's an action item that will need a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evan School District 6 approves the agenda as presented.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Not seeing any? Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Azari.
Aye.
Director Bentley.
Aye.
Director Campos Pitsi.
Aye.
Director Matthews.
Aye.
Director Norwood.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. And we'll give it back to our superintendent for our superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Matthews. And you know, several of you have mentioned the backpack event. It was such an amazing event. It's the largest that we've had since I've been in the district. I think the largest we've ever had with really thousands and thousands of families there. And I want to give out a huge shout out to all of the vendors and the providers and the community volunteers who came to support us. We could not do this event without this tremendous supportive community. We do this event and we have amazing staff who organize it and choreograph the whole thing. Ms. Myers and her team. And we are able to do this because of the tremendous community in which we work and really the hundreds of volunteers who come into the event in an effort to support our families and our schools and our school administrators. I mean, they were all getting ready to start school. They had already welcomed back teachers and so many of our school staff were here and helping to support that event, our support staff as well as our licensed staff. So thank you to all of you. It was a tremendous event and certainly kicked us off in a positive way to get us ready for today, which was the first day of school for most of our students, not our little, our little...
and very well spoken. And I have the opportunity to recognize a staff member tonight on my superintendent's honor roll, who is also instrumental, she and her colleagues, with ensuring students are in career pathways and pursuing career pathways. And in this case, it's the career pathway of agriculture at Greeley West High School. And so I'd like to invite Alexandra Grimes to come up to the podium. You can bring supporters with if you need to, Alex. I know you have some of them here tonight. Yeah, come up and give her strength and love as she gets recognized tonight. We learned, yeah. I love that you brought students with you tonight. I love that. I love that. Well, we learned in mid-July that Ms. Grimes, who is a vocational education teacher at Greeley West High School, that she completed the 20th Annual National Association of Agricultural Educators National Agri-science Teacher Ambassador Academy. And she did that in Lexington, Kentucky. This academy is a professional development institute where candidates learn about inquiry-based learning methods, as well as learn how to draw on science that is already present in many agricultural topics. We're excited that Ms. Grimes is now a National Agri-science Teacher Ambassador. So she joins about 60-plus other teachers from the U.S., Puerto Rico, and the U.S. Virgin Islands, who were selected this year to serve as a resource to other teachers in their home states and across the country to support those teachers in their professional growth and their development with agri-science. And so we're just so proud of you. And you can't have been teaching that long.
This will be your fourth.
Just your fourth, yes. Just her fourth year. So this is a Future Farmers of America, school-based national youth leadership development organization with a mission to make a positive difference in the lives of students by developing their potential for premier leadership. So the students you see here have on their FFA jackets. Very proud of you for representing tonight. And I want, I want to recognize the students for being here with you, Ms. Grimes, and I want to thank you for your ongoing dedication to your profession and to helping grow other teachers. Would you like to say a few words?
One thing I would just like to say is that I am so proud to be a part of District Six and bringing these opportunities to our students and to parents and everybody. It's been an amazing experience, and I hope to not only help my students continue to be the best for their future, but I'm also helped to help other teachers in our district because I feel like a lot of them could use it. So I'm so honored for this and thank you guys so very much.
All right. Congratulations to you guys. We're very proud of all that you do. All right, moving on, we need to approve our agenda, and that's an action item that will need a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six approves the agenda as presented. Second?
Thank you both. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Not seeing any? Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Azari?
Aye.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Pitsi?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. And we'll give it back to our superintendent for our superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Matthews. And you know, several of you have mentioned the backpack event. It was such an amazing event. It's the largest that we've had since I've been in the district. I think the largest we've ever had with really thousands and thousands of families there. And I want to give out a huge shout out to all of the vendors and the providers and the community volunteers who came to support us. We could not do this event without this tremendous supportive community. We do this event, and we have amazing staff who organize it and choreograph the whole thing, Ms. Myers and her team. And we are able to do this because of the tremendous community in which we work and the, really the hundreds of volunteers who come into the event in an effort to support our families and our schools and our school administrators. I mean, they were all getting ready to start school. They had already welcomed back teachers, and so many of our school staff were here and helping to support that event, our support staff as well as our licensed staff. So thank you to all of you. It was a tremendous event and certainly kicked us off in a positive way to get us ready for today, which was the first day of school for most of our students, not our little, our littlest, tiniest ones, but for most of our students, today was the first day of school. And we had the opportunity, I had the opportunity to be in several classrooms and several buildings. And I'm just so very, very proud of our leadership in our district, our leadership in our schools, and the way in which our teachers and other staff come in and welcome their students to their building and to their classroom. And I will tell you this, we are still enrolling kids. Today, many, many families were still enrolling in school today. And so we want to get them all in, we want to get them enrolled, but we are, we are a growing district, which is a good problem to have. And we have some families that haven't shown up yet, so we're hoping to get them here tomorrow and get them in school soon. But we are still enrolling students, and I want to give a huge shout out to the Family Center and the enrollment team who are working so hard to get families in our system so that they can attend school. So great work, everyone, and just really, really proud of all of you and all the work that you do every single day for the 22,000-plus students here in District Six. Thank you. Now I want to induce several new hires to you. And so I'm going to give a little bit shorter bios on these because I know you all have seen their full bios, but we've been busy continuing to hire, and we've not had a board meeting since the second week of June. So we haven't brought these folks to you over the summer. So I want to, I want to ask them to each stand and be introduced. And maybe you guys could just come line up along the wall over here. So, because you're going to be hard to be seen, there's so many of you. So I first want to introduce one of our latest hires, who is our new coordinator of our specials curriculum, Kathy Azari. So Kathy, come on up. So I should say that with several of the positions you'll hear about tonight, especially when I talk about coordinators, we did a lot of restructuring and reorganization with Dr. Dattery leaving, and really feel good about the structure of where we've landed. And you will notice some differences even in tonight's board meeting with some of those changes we've made. But Mrs. Azari will, she's, as you all know, is a retired band director from District Six. Most recently, she was at Brentwood, and she'll be coordinating music, art, and PE for us here in the district. So glad to have you, Kathy. Then I want to introduce to you our principal at Dos Rios Elementary School, Amy Bustrom. Amy served for 10 years as assistant principal at McCullough STEM Academy here in District Six. And Amy takes the place of Matt Thompson, who moved to the district office in Human Resources. Now I want to introduce to you our new principal at Early College Academy, So Bill has been in the district for quite some time now, experienced as an assistant principal, a dean of students, experienced with the middle years program in IB, but most recently was curriculum coordinator for secondary education and K-12 specials, which Ms. Azari has picked up. So welcome to Bill. And then I want you to meet John Fisher, who is our coordinator for mathematics. So John, John has been our facilitator in mathematics, but with the changes in the organization, we have moved John to a coordinator position coordinating K-12 mathematics. And then I want to introduce to you our coordinator for personalized learning, Ryan Fitzpatrick. So Ryan was a facilitator prior to this position here at the district office, and we've moved him into the coordinator role and doing all things personalized learning plans and a lot of work around technology and those pieces as well, our Schoology and some of our online learning pieces. Now I want to introduce to you our new secondary coordinator for CLD, So Caleb comes to us out of Greeley West High School, where he was a teacher for the culturally linguistically diverse students there at Greeley West. And I must say, he is a 2024 Milken Educator Award recipient. Yay, Caleb. And now I want to introduce to you our new assistant principal at S. Krista McCullough STEM Academy. So she's taking the place of Amy Bustrom, who became the principal at Dos, Kalen Kingman. Kalen's experience has mostly been high school experience, and she, most recently, was the IB coordinator at Greeley West High School. And her background is science, so I'm sure that excited the STEM Academy over there. Now I want to introduce to you Jonathan Ledspike, who is the new assistant principal at Dos Rios. Jonathan was also an IB diploma program coordinator at Greeley West, English teacher at Greeley West. This will be his first experience with elementary students, so we're glad to have him at the elementary. And then I want to introduce to you Lisa McGee, our curriculum, our coordinator for curriculum for English Language Arts, Avid, and International Baccalaureate. Lisa, Lisa came to us having been an instructional coach for IB and Avid coordinator at Brentwood Middle School. She also has high school teaching experience. And so I hope you're seeing that these positions, some of these are, other people had these positions, and as we move people around, we've created some new positions as well. All right, I want to introduce to you our coordinator for, our elementary coordinator for CLD, Robin Murray. And Robin had, had been the facilitator for our instructional coaches, and we eliminated that position. And then she graciously accepted this position, supporting our culturally linguistically diverse students. All right, I'm getting closer. We have a new dean of students at Northridge High School. I want to introduce to you Jeremy Ramsdale. So Jeremy came to us from the other side of Colorado in Wyoming, where he was a teacher and behavior intervention specialist at the elementary level in Laramie County School District Number One in Cheyenne, correct?
Yeah.
So welcome. All good people eventually leave Wyoming and come to Colorado. Several of us have, yeah. We're raising our hands. All right. And then I did not introduce to you all last month, and David Reyes was here as our coordinator, our assistant director for the Family Center and Cultural Excellence. He's not able to be here tonight, but I wanted to mention him to you. He's actually at a City of Greeley Human Relations Commission meeting tonight. So we're sorry he couldn't be with us. Okay, I have a new assistant principal at Heath Middle School. I saw him in action today, so I know that he's actually working over there, Daniel Rosenfeld. Come on up. So Daniel came to us out of a specialist role at the district level office in the Pooter School District, working with English Language Development. And so we're really glad to have you here, Daniel. And then I want to introduce to you our new director of special education, Nicole Stewart. So Nicole fills the position that was vacated by Tammy Branham, when we moved Tammy over to our new supports for students staff position. And Nicole had been the assistant principal at Dos Rios. So you see a lot of dominos here in our hiring. And then I want to introduce the new dean of students at Greeley West High School, Brianna Tanner. Okay, Brianna came to us from having been a teacher at Greeley West High School, and she's not yet, there are a couple of you haven't interviewed with me yet. So we'll get that on the schedule, Brianna, okay? All right, I want to introduce our coordinator for secondary curriculum, a former science teacher in our district and coach Liz Mock Okay. And then finally, we hired a new coordinator for our preschool program, and it's going really well this year. Actually, last year, you heard a lot about preschool was a failure at, from the state level, not here. But Laura Wiley is our new coordinator for our preschool So I heard a story about you, Laura, because Laura comes to us from the compliance side of the House of Preschool with early childhood and childcare licensing. And now she has to enforce the rules that she used to impose upon us. So welcome, Laura. So isn't this a great-looking group of new hires? So, and as you all know, many of these people came from within our school district, and I'm especially proud of that. And when we hire good people in new positions and new opportunities, we end up hiring more people into those jobs. So thank you to all of you. I know you are tired. You have permission to go home. You've had a big first day of school. So thank you to all of you and congratulations. All right. Did I forget anybody? Just as I dismissed them, I didn't forget anybody, did I? Okay. Oh, Valentino Dressler! Valentino, come on up! Thank you, Valentino! All right. So you all may remember, there's a reason I missed him. He was actually on the agenda in June. So I'm excited to introduce you Valentino Dressler. And I know you're shocked to learn that he's at Greeley Central High School as an assistant principal in his orange shirt. So Valentino, you all approved the hire of Valentino in June. He came over from Greeley West High School to Greeley Central, where he served as the dean of students, and his background is actually in school counseling. So glad to have you, Valentino, and glad you could come up all by yourself. All right, now, did I get them all? Phew. It's a team effort, President Matthews. Thank you so much, sir. I have nothing else for my report tonight.
That's a big report. And congratulations to all of you on your new positions. And since I gave a shout out to the communications team, a quick shout out to Human Resources team for, I'm looking at our personnel report. You guys have been, have been busy all summer long. So thank you for getting the right people in the right places and on the right seats on the bus. You guys are always excellent at that. Next up on our agenda is a report from Early College Academy. So I'd like to invite, I'm not sure who I'm inviting, Mr. Anthony Asmus, looks like. Our ECA team, our outgoing principal and our incoming principal. So welcome.
So good evening, President Matthews, members of the board, and Dr. Pilch. We're excited to be here for this very first Innovation 2030 update at our very first board meeting. So thank you for that opportunity. Before we get started, though, I do want to talk a little bit more about what President Matthews started sharing a little bit of the data. So we're excited about a couple of different things. First, AP, overall, our AP scores, our average scores per building, you'll see an increase in all of our scores. And so, and we are, we are above the national average in our AP scores. And so things are going the right way. We've got the right amount of rigor that we're putting on our students, and they're responding to that. Also, you saw an increase in AP scholars, but we also saw an increase in our AP honors and also our AP with distinction. And so our AP scholars are scoring a three in three or more tests. Our AP honors are scoring a three on four tests and scoring at an average of 3.25. And our AP with distinction are scoring a 3.5 or higher on five tests. And so we're seeing an increase in all of those categories, which is just pretty amazing, how our students continue to rise up to the challenges put in front of them. I also want to say our concurrent enrollment numbers are increasing. This year, we, we will know more when the students are in their seats, but we're expecting a huge increase in concurrent enrollment. This was a goal that we set out last year to make sure that we are pushing out to more of the parents in different languages and trying to get different students in our seats. And it has worked. And so when we do a concurrent enrollment update, we'll be, I think we'll be pleasantly surprised with, or just pleasantly excited about the numbers that we're going to have in concurrent enrollment. I also wanted to talk a little bit about our graduation rate. I can't share numbers. That's always embargoed. But I do want to say that in our graduation rate, we'll see the increase this year, probably about two or three percentage points over our highest number, which is just pretty amazing. And so we worked very hard this past year to make sure we've accounted for every single student and that they had the support they need and the acceleration they needed at times to get back on track. And so we will celebrate that when we're allowed to do so. We still have work to do. We still have a lot of work to do, but those are signs of a very healthy district under the leadership of Dr. Pilch and just the support of the board. So we just want to say thank you for all of that and everything you do for us and the amazing leadership that we have in this district. Tonight, we are pleased to share with you an update from Early College Academy and our amazing partnership with Ames Community College. Early College Academy was established to provide a unique opportunity for our students to increase post-secondary attainment, reduce remedial courses in post-secondary, and address the issue of post-secondary affordability. Joining me tonight are Ms. Kim Silva, Director of School Supports and former principal of ECA, and Bill Fern, our new principal of ECA. As always, our work is grounded in our mission and vision, where District Six engages every student in a personalized, well-rounded, and excellent education, preparing students to be college and career-ready, and empowering students in partnership with families and communities to succeed in tomorrow's world. Our district is guided by core values that shape every decision we make. And this and the values that are tied closely to this work are we know every child can succeed, can achieve. We build positive relationships with students, families, and communities, and we commit to excellence, innovation, and continuous improvement. As you know, our strategic plan has four focus areas: student learning and achievement, strength in partnerships, culture and climate, and operational and organizational effectiveness. Our presentation tonight will mostly focus on student learning and achievement, specifically under goal number one, to provide a personalized learning experience so all students graduate on time and are college and career-ready. We're grounded by our objectives to align our systems and increase student participation and our outcomes, where we create personalized learning plans for all students to include a career or college pathway or course of study, which directly aligns to the work at ECA and always to increase the on-time graduation rate. The measures we use to capture this work and make sure we're on track is, are these two: by 2025, 90% of students in grades nine through 12 will have a four-year academic plan of study, and by 2030, 90% of our students will graduate on time in four years. To dive deeper into our ECA data, we have Kim Silva, our Director of Schools, who knows this data the best. So I'll turn this over to Kim at this time, and we'll end with hearing our next steps from Bill Fern.
Thank you. To begin, I just want to share a little bit about what Early College Academy means for our students and our community. First, our students have an opportunity to earn a high school diploma and an Associate of Arts degree within four years. Secondly, faculty and staff at ECA strive to ensure that the learning environment is personalized with smaller class sizes within the rigorous college atmosphere. Third, our students have an opportunity to participate in extracurricular clubs and activities that engage students beyond the school day. And students also have an opportunity to participate in athletics at their home high school. And finally, tuition is free to our students. We're so thankful to our voters in Greeley Evans, as we are funding these fees by Mill levy override This is our 10th year of Early College Academy, and it started with just ninth and 10th graders when they first started, and then those students rolled up to juniors and seniors. District Six and Ames entered into a very unique partnership for both the Ames programming and facilities to benefit our students. And there is an MOU agreement between Ames and District Six that captures this work. In this partnership, Ames funds professor salaries, a director, an assistant director, academic advisor, tutors, and books. And District Six funds District Six teachers, the principal, technology, special education providers, social and emotional support, gifted and talented staff, as well as custodial and nutrition employees. We have several goals and measures that we use to monitor and measure progress at ECA. We have been a school performance since we have been in existence, and we are above, generally above the state average. In addition, we have these four goals. So the first goal is that 95% or higher attendance rate, and we continue to put measures in place to support attendance, but our attendance is generally pretty good. Our next goal is to have a 90% or higher pass rate in ninth through 12th grade coursework. Our next goal is to have a 90% or higher pass rate in ninth through 12th grade coursework, and that does include both high school and college courses. The third goal is for 100% of our students to earn 30 college credits or more and a high school diploma. The national average is 90%, and you can see every year, 100% of our students have earned at least 30 college credits. And so, this is a wonderful accomplishment for our students and our staff at ECA. Finally, we have a goal of 65% of our students or higher will receive an AA degree. Again, the national average is 33%, and we've exceeded that annually. We are very proud of the work of our students to achieve this goal. We had a slight dip in data this past year, however, several students finished their degree this summer, which will push that percentage back over 80%. And all of our students graduate with lots and lots of college credit. Graduation rates are obviously preliminary, so that hasn't been released by CDE, but we think it looks pretty good. So, we're thinking we're right there. But our graduation rates have been really strong since we opened as a school. Student enrollment this year, this current school year, we have a total of 303 students broken down by grade level, as shown on the left side. While we do have a smaller junior class, we are looking, we are on track to graduate actually our largest senior class this year. The number is preliminary, though. The numbers are, as several students and applicants, you know, we have new applicants every week. So, Bill is still reviewing applicants and offering seats, and will continue to do so. The table to the right outlines the ethnicity breakdown, which is very similar to the greater District 6 student population. Over the past several years, we have focused much of our efforts on retention. Our goal is to retain more and more students each year. ECA is a challenging academic environment, but we know that any student who takes advantage of the supports and resources at ECA can be successful and graduate. Let me share just a little bit about our student successes through our academic programming. So, our master schedule is built on a seven-period day where classes meet five days per week. Our unique academic program permits students to earn both a high school credit and college credit towards an Associate of Arts degree. Each of our students is establishing a high school transcript and a college transcript at the same time. For example, our freshmen and sophomores take a college-level class for American Government and US History and also receive high school credit for these classes. Within our program, ECA students will earn seven high school credits in each of their freshman and sophomore years while simultaneously earning between nine and 13 college credits. Most of our juniors and all of our seniors are enrolled in a full college schedule ranging from 12 to 15 credits each semester, depending on the student's junior-year math class. So, students are able to tailor their junior and senior-year elective courses according to their post-secondary graduation plans. These classes, the classes emboldened on the slides indicate the courses where students gain both high school and college credit upon successful completion. This slide reveals the number of high school credits and college credit hours the ECA students can potentially earn. Also included on this slide is the cost savings for families, because there are no fees at ECA. The cost savings to students is calculated comparing the $130 credit hour at Ames Community College to the 478 per credit hour at UNC. So, as you can see, the number of credits a student takes increases each year, therefore increasing the cost savings. The range shown indicates the amount of money a student would save on tuition if they were to earn those credits at a community college or a four-year university instead. This is incredible savings for our students' first two years of college coursework, and we're so fortunate to have this partnership with Ames Community College for our students. So, some new opportunities. So, the last two years, students were given the opportunity to enroll in some courses on the Ames main campus. This group of students had satisfied all their high school graduation requirements, as well as their AA requirements, at the end of their fall semester. So, students worked with their Ames Community College advisor to identify some courses that would really support their college or career path. The students enrolled in a variety of courses. Some of those courses were like Intro to CAD Design, Painting, Intro to Health and Exercise Science, accounting courses, and more. And those were not classes that we offered at ECA. And by completing these courses while still enrolled at ECA, our students were even further along in their pathway and for their specific four-year college of choice and their degree. We're excited to continue to explore how we can utilize concurrent enrollment courses on the Ames main campus. This is a great example of the strong partnership between District 6 and Ames. So, in addition, and new this year, the ECA team is working on expanding degree options by adding an Associate of Science degree. We have found that many of our students have a strong interest in the health and STEM fields. By adding some additional course options, junior and senior year, we believe we can further support students in their pathway. The team will be working this semester to develop a plan for this year's sophomore class to declare a pathway of an Associate of Arts degree or an Associate of Science degree, so they can be placed in the appropriate courses during their junior year. This will be an amazing opportunity for our students, and as you can see, this is a pretty exciting time for ECA. And so, at this time, I'd like to introduce the new principal at ECA, Bill Fern, and he'll talk about next steps.
Thank you. As Kim said, the Associate of Science degree will include some different course options, allowing students to, in addition to having the option of the AA degree, pursue fields that are more in line with medical, pre-med, STEM possibilities, allied healthcare. So, it really will open up a range of opportunities for students. In addition, in addition to students taking courses to support their specific career pathway, the expansion of the Associate of Science degree will also have students taking some courses on the main campus. With that, we currently have bus routes that get students across town, and we're continuing to work on exploring more efficient options to increase student use and access to these routes, as well as ways of getting students onto the main campus more often. Thank you. Any questions?
I'm sure we may have a few. Dr. Campos Spitsy has one.
Yeah, so, I'm so excited about the Associate of Science degree. Yeah, just how cool for our students who are interested in pre-health or engineering or science bachelor's degrees. I was curious, well, one other comment. I texted Dr. Pilch a kind of dumb question this last week. We got those numbers about our AP scholars and super excited to see it by high school breakdown, and I was like, where's ECA? And I was like, Deirdre, why isn't ECA data on the AP graph? And she's like, well, they don't take advanced placement classes, they are in college classes. And so, yeah, that had kind of gone over my head. But imagine if they did take, right, like, our AP numbers would be even higher. So, it's a kind of a cool bragging right there. Speaking of kind of bus routes, and I was curious, the breakdown of, from which middle schools or K-8s, the students who go to ECA, if there's like one K-8 or middle school that's more represented than others, or, yeah.
We really do have a representation from across the district. I mean, we have students from all over, from Bela Romero, from Winograd, McAuliffe, Brentwood, Franklin, they really are coming from everywhere.
Yeah, and we always have applicants from out of district that come to our district too, which is really exciting. So, I mean, every year, it's a little bit different. We try to kind of figure the numbers to see if there's one that has more students that come, and every year, it's slightly different, but it's just really, almost every single school is represented at ECA, which is amazing. So, for bus routes, our students are coming from everywhere, which is pretty awesome. But it also can be complex in figuring out how we can get all of our students to our building. And so, our transportation department has been amazing. We came up with a plan last year, and it was good. And we're still working to find some additional, just some additional routes to get more students to come, because parents are trying to drop off students at multiple buildings all over our city. So, we just don't want that to be a barrier.
I have a similar question. I'm just, I'm thinking about a parent that's maybe watching this at home with an eighth grader, and they're seeing all of the numbers and the money that is saved on tuition, and how do they go about, how do you go about recruiting, and how do they go about investigating ECA?
So, each year during open enrollment, we get into the middle schools and we have conversations with their students, the students in the eighth grade. We also have open enrollment night, and Ames does some advertising for us too, on their main campus, to make sure that students know that they're accessing through that partnership. You know, each year, we do hear some families say, I didn't know anything about Early College Academy. So, we know we still have some work to do to get the word out there across our system. But I think that strong partnerships with middle school principals and counselors, just so students know there's choice. There's so many choices, there's amazing, there are amazing high schools across our district, and we just want to make sure our students know all about all of them, so they can make the most informed choice. But we do go to middle schools, we advertise on our website, we advertise on Ames marquee, we send information out to all of our eighth-grade families electronically, and then we have a big open house where we get a lot of information. And we actually have, sometimes we have at our open house like sixth-grade students that are coming, because their parents are already really excited and preparing, which is really fun.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from board members? I don't... Go ahead, Dr. Campos Spitsy.
So, on your graph, you were comparing to like national average? Like, what pool are you looking at for that average? Because I was like, 33% get AAs? What's, who are you comparing yourself to?
Well, the college helps us pull that information each time, and so, I think it's like, full-on nationally, all of the students, it's not just early colleges, just nationally that are working towards that same goal. So, I can't tell you the exact, I could get it for you, I can't tell you the exact...
So, it's like high schools with a similar model?
Yeah, but our model is unique.
Yeah, but there are early college academies throughout the country, so I would presume it's from that pool of data, but we'll get that for you and put it in E-week, guys.
I don't see any other questions for you guys, so I'll just say thank you for the presentation and for all that you do. We're excited for both, you Ms. Silva and you, Mr. Fern. Thank you. Next on our agenda is our public participation. As a board, we welcome the comments of community members, and we dedicate a portion of each business meeting to provide an opportunity for the community to present brief comments. All speakers are limited to two minutes for comments. Our board members typically will not respond, but we may ask our district staff to do so. All written testimony or handouts must be submitted to our board secretary, Ms. Amy Lemon. We ask all speakers and those in attendance to conduct themselves in dignified and non-disruptive manner, cheering, snapping, clapping, and other distractions are not permitted. Anyone who disturbs order may be required to sit down or to leave the boardroom. Speakers are responsible for their own speech, and all remarks must be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th grade students. We are committed to providing a safe environment where all members of the school community are treated with dignity and respect, and we expect all speakers to exercise their speech rights responsibly. With that read, I think we have one speaker tonight, Ms. Sonia Miller. Welcome, Ms. Miller. Thank you for being here.
Hello. It's August already, our kids back in school, the work being done. To hoodwink the fools, from bird food pandemics to election fraud drama to transgender nut jobs like Michael Obama, it's all just a game, a giant screenplay, and none of it matters at the end of the day. Soap operas and politics are one and the same. The puppets on stage, they have skin in the game, be it secrets, or power, or fortune, or fame. We all serve a master with works and with deeds, for good or for evil, we all take our creeds. Temptation is brutal, the devil's not nice. Some cross over that line after being enticed. Making deals with Satan for comforts and pleasures will steal your peace, your soul, and your treasures. When we're living in sin, we hand over that power, and he's watching to see whom he may devour. His gifts are not free and his words are not true, but when you're in it so deep, just what do you do? You vote as you're told and you keep your mouth shut about child traffic and library smut. You lie to the public and you cover up plots, and you tell us it's safe to take all the shots. They'll not do what is right, they've got mouths to feed, a mortgage to pay, and a license to keep. In a world of sickness and cancer and death, they'll inject you with poison until your last breath. Prepare to refuse and just tell them no. Get ready for pushback and shade they will throw. The beast system is here, closing in on us all, presenting us choices and awaiting our fall. Taking the mark will damn us to hell, the place of great torment and terrible smells. Each day, we decide just whom we will serve, our Lord Jesus Christ or Satan the perv. Some questions remain about our politicians, who've landed themselves in compromising positions. But the pieces were falling right into their place. It's all making sense now, and what a disgrace. Our secrets or burdens we carry alone unless we confess them, so we can atone. Father, please forgive them and wash them of their sins. Bind the demons plaguing them, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Next tonight, we have the consent agenda. So, this is an action item that will need a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District 6 approves items presented on the consent agenda and authorizes the officers to sign any and all contracts.
Second.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda?
Excuse me, President Matthews, oh, go ahead. Maybe your question will be what I was going to say.
I was just going to ask about the Service Master contract and see if we were planning on getting reimbursed for that, right?
Well, we are working with insurance, and we hope to, we hope to. There have been multiple Service Master contracts, I think you've seen. Yeah, yeah. I mean, we're, it's, as you can see the building tonight, I mean, there's still a lot of work going on here in this building, as well as across the street. What I was going to add, if I may, is that all these contracts you see here, with the exception of the Ames contract, are all bills that have already been paid that I signed off on in absence of a school board meeting with your permission last June.
All right. Thank you, yes, we gave you that authority. And we appreciate you bringing it back for our consideration now. Are there any other questions about the consent agenda? Sing none? Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Azari?
Aye.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsy?
Aye.
Director Mash? Excuse me. Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next on our agenda is our 2024-2025 district curriculum adoption, and this is an action item that will need a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Will County School District 6 adopt the 2024-2025 district curriculum as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. I see some people coming to present to us. Dr. Pilch, is there anything you would like to say as a way of introduction, or shall we just turn it over to Mr. Tuttle? Welcome, Mr. Tuttle.
Thank you. Good evening, President Matthews, and Dr. Pilch, and members of the school board. We're pleased to be here tonight to present to you the 2024-2025 curriculum guides that were developed by a dedicated curriculum team. We have two directors with us. They're familiar faces, but they're in new roles this year as we restructure things. So, you'll see, both of them are Directors of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. We have Jenny, and I heard earlier, Andrews, now Jenny Jensen, is our elementary, and Dr. Dagan Andrews is our secondary director. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Dagan Andrews.
Thank you, Mr. Tuttle. Each year, we update specific guides to reflect the changes in the Colorado academic standards, align with new instructional resources, and ensure consistency with the state assessment system, including Colorado measures of academic success, PSAT, and SAT. These updates also align with the Colorado revised statutes that outline the work to be done at the local level. Moreover, our curriculum review aligns with Innovation 2030, particularly Student Learning and Achievement Goal 2. This goal emphasizes the implementation of a consistent and coherently-aligned curriculum, assessment, and instructional practice that are research-based, ensure that all students learn. This summer's curriculum updates for the upcoming school year involve 73 educators, including 62 teachers, six instructional coaches, and five administrators. Together, they reviewed, updated, and enhanced our district curriculum guides to better support our educators. At the secondary level, John Fisher and Bill Fern led a team of math and science educators to better align our algebra and physics courses. Their collaboration resulted in a comprehensive framework now integrated into both Algebra I and Physics Curriculum Guides, ensuring a cohesive educational experience for our students. Additionally, Bill Fern led the development of new curriculum guides for middle school English Language Arts teachers, aligning them with our newly adopted EL Education Language Arts curriculum. The effort also included a creation of a playbook, a vital resource designed to support teachers by focusing on vertically-aligned priority standards and helping streamline the planning process. process. These highlights represent just a portion of the extensive summer work dedicated to updating our secondary curriculum. To provide insights into the work done at the elementary level, I would like to turn it over to Jenny Jensen, our Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment for Elementary.
Good evening. At the elementary level, the K-five literacy curriculum team led by Tammy Hermance consisted of teachers and coaches who met to provide additional support and guidance regarding the vertical alignment of our ELA curriculum. The team looked at recommendations from Achieve the Core and decided on district priority standards for teacher planning and instruction. From the priority standards work, the team selected common district assessments as well as updated the curriculum guides. Resources were developed for school administrators and school leaders to support teachers, and recommendations were given regarding instructional days to support teachers' year-long planning with the curriculum. The curriculum guides presented to you this evening include all core content areas of K-12 Language Arts, Math, Science, and Social Studies, and elective areas of K-12 Music, Art, PE, Health, and six through twelve world languages. This curriculum will be implemented across District Six classrooms in these content areas for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year pending your approval. Following the board approval, the curriculum guides will be posted on the district website so that our staff, parents, community have access. Additionally, these guides are shared internally through Google Sharing, so all teachers have access to the curriculum guides and the accompanying documents. We would like to share our sincere appreciation to the teachers who worked on these curriculum guides, and thank you for your consideration.
And with that, we'll turn it back to President Matthews and Dr. Pilch, see if there's any questions, and for your approval of the curriculum guides.
Well, thank you all for, for being here and for the presentation. Um, we'll see if we have any questions. Uh, I'll remind our, our public, we've, we've voted on all of our curriculums before. Uh, we just do this annually to, um, I think we have to. Um, but we're not introducing anything new. Uh, Mr. Ozari?
Yeah, I just want to, um, give a shout out again to all the district staff who work on these curriculums. I know that many of them give up, uh, their summers, uh, to work on this materials, these materials. So, again, appreciate the work.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Seeing none, I'll let you guys return to your seats, and Ms. Lemon, can we have a vote, please?
Director Ozari?
Aye.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsy?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next on our agenda is the first read of policy ACA name changes. And so because this is the first read, it's not a action item, there's nothing that we will do tonight. We will, we always read, uh, we don't actually read, but present, uh, a new policy, and then wait to the next board meeting to, to vote on that. And, uh, but Dr. Pilch, is there anything that we need to say? We've already discussed this. Um, are there any questions or comments from board members on this agenda item?
I think with all these policies, President Matthews, since the board had an opportunity to review them with Attorney Nate Fall during the work session, if you have additional questions that you, you have since then, we can bring Mr. Fall up, and he or I can answer those questions, but otherwise, I, I am comfortable with you proceeding.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Seeing no questions or comments, we'll move on to our next item. It's the second read and repeal of policy AC dash R-one, nondiscrimination, equal opportunity complaint and compliance process. This is an action item that needs a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six repeals policy AC dash R-one, nondiscrimination slash equal opportunity complaint and compliance process effective as of July first, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion on this? I'll remind everyone that this, uh, was something we approved on an emergency basis back in June, but now are, are coming back, um, to make it official. Is there any question, comment? Right, seeing none, Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Ozari?
Aye.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsy?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next is our second read and adoption of policy AC dash R-one, harassment and discrimination investigation procedures for students. This is an action item as well.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six approves policy AC dash R-one, harassment and discrimination investigation procedures for students as presented, effective as of July first, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Thank you both. Same thing, this is something we approved as an emergency measure back in June, but are there any questions or comments? Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Ozari?
Aye.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsy?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next, our revisions to policy GBJ, personnel records and files. This is an action item that requires a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District Six approves the revisions to policy GBJ, personnel records and files as presented.
Second.
As Dr. Pilch has already said, we had a chance to review these next set of policies with Mr. Fall earlier, but are there any further questions or comments? Seeing none, Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote?
Director Ozari?
Aye.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsy?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next, we have revisions to IKF graduation requirements, and this is an action item.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District Six approves the revisions to policy IKF graduation requirements as presented.
Second.
Any questions, comments on this one? Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Ozari?
Aye.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsy?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next, we have revisions to J student policies, and this is an action item.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District Six approves the revisions to the J student policies as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Any questions or comments on this one? Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Ozari?
Aye.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsy?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. And finally, we have revisions to K, School Community Home Relations Policies, and this is also an action item.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District Six approves the revisions to K School Community dash Home Relations Policy as presented.
Aye, I'm, aye, second. Apologize.
That's right. We all get to go in a little fast. Mr. Ozari, any questions, comments on this one? Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Ozari?
Aye.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsy?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Well, with all of those policies now done, we get to do something fun, and we get a update on our summer bond project in progress. So welcome, Mr. Kent Henson. Dr. Pilch, is there anything you need to say before Mr. Henson comes up?
Well, while he's making his way to the podium, I'll just share that, uh, being out in schools these last couple of weeks, addressing staff and visiting the schools, it is just so fun to finally see all of our schools having been touched by this bond issue. And really, these last several projects were just as beautiful as the ones you've seen in the past.
Okay, well, thank you, um, President Matthews and Dr. Pilch, the Board of Education. Uh, I am here to give you maybe your last bond update, at least for the bond, uh, work and bond projects. And I want to remind you that the, uh, bond passed in what year?
Twenty nineteen?
November of twenty nineteen. So it's been less than five years, and we're nearing our completion of the bond project. So that's, uh, pretty cool, uh, work that we've been able to do. It's been a lot of work. And, um, these schools that we're ending, um, up with, uh, this summer have given us some challenges, but they ca- came together, uh, quite nicely here at the end. And this poster banner here is the last of thirty-one that we flew in the district over the last five years on each of our projects. So once again, we'd like to thank the voters of the Greeley Evans, uh, area for supporting us in this bond issue. And this, you've seen this many times, I keep showing you this raggedy spreadsheet, but we have just used this to keep, uh, track of our project, uh, projects and the sequence of our projects. And as we get down here to the bottom, uh, all those that seem near completion, you'll notice that they're just one cell wide. That means we started these all basically, uh, in April of last year, and then these are really summer slammers, is what we call them, and then try to get them done before the school was started this year. And so we've had a couple little delays, but we were able to get, uh, students in seats in all of these, um, buildings. Um, so our summer, uh, we were fairly busy, not as busy as last summer, but we did have eight school, uh, projects. Uh, two of them, uh, began in the summer of twenty twenty-three, and we finished them this summer. And a thing to remind you about is with these projects here, we run, unlike most school districts, we have a two-year warranty on all of our work. So we chase these projects for two years after they're completed. So when you look at the list and look up at when those other projects were completed, we still have quite a bit of work that we've been doing with, uh, warranty. Um, and as I presented to you last spring, uh, when we get done with these, uh, projects, we are expected to have less than one percent remaining of our bond with contingency. Um, these projects that are in blue, uh, this slide I presented to you last spring about, uh, bonds that received, um, CIBAC approval for addition, uh, proceeds to enhance them. And so the three in blue that we did this summer, uh, really needed addition work to get the office areas out to the vestibule in front of the school. So we did a lot of flipping of space within the buildings, uh, to make them more secure. And so now, um, you know, as you get out, you'll get to see these, but Shawshin, if you remember Shawshin, it had a valley like Centennial, you walked up to the front door within the school, but you're really outside of the school. And so we filled all that in for security purposes and brought the office to the front of the school. So you can see that in that picture. And then, um, you know, the office on the left, uh, is brand new, and then the new smart lab was completed this summer. Um, and a lot of these pictures, you're gonna see them maybe with bags on them, because I took the pictures last week. And a lot of finish work has been done in the last four or five days, uh, to make these presentable for kids. Uh, Shawshin also got new cafeteria with cafeteria tables. Uh, there's a new classroom refurbished with carpet paint, door hardware, just like every other classroom in the district. And then the gym, uh, we had one of the carpeted gyms, uh, that was, what, forty, thirty-five year old carpet, uh, we replaced at your request. And so we got a nice rubberized, uh, floor in the gym there. Fred Chardis, um, moved into the Cameron Building, which is our oldest building in the district. It is older than, by about ten years, older than Greeley Central. And so we did a lot of work in there, creating, uh, learning pods, uh, spaces for elementary groups, middle groups, and junior high groups, um, in there. And so that has worked out quite well. We also have a secure vestibule on the front of their school that is, um, in the middle picture. So you'll get to see that at their kickoff, uh, next week. This is Bella Romero K-three last week. Um, today, all the, there's glass in the windows, and you could walk in the front door, and the office is somewhat complete. But, um, here's an example where he took the vestibule outside the building, uh, under the vestibule, and then put it up against the office. So, uh, the office is on the right, again, that's about three days ago. Um, looks quite a bit different today, and the smart lab on the left has been, uh, completed now. So a lot of improvements there at K-three. One of the things we did at K-three in the hallway, if you look at the picture on the right, is we changed the wayfinding in that building. Uh, you try walking in that building with the lights off, I got lost in there doing circles, um, uh, one day. So, uh, with the lights on, it's hard enough, but we softened up the wayfinding there using carpet and, uh, different colored hexagons on the wall to represent the different grade level groups. And there's a updated classroom with new furniture on the left. Brentwood Middle School, um, the picture on the right is a picture of the vestibule. The red part is a waiting area, and then on the right will be an office area where, uh, be like Greeley Central a little bit, where we have that staffed and are allowing people entry into the building. The picture on the left is last week, um, that part of the project has been lagging behind, uh, as we're waiting for products and materials, uh, to arrive. But we do have a plan for getting people in and out of the building until that's complete. Um, this is the cafeteria, uh, we did, if you remember, the cafeteria was sunken, and so was full of bars and ramps that you had to walk around. And really, that eliminated surface area, uh, in the cafeteria for usable space to feed kids. Or in this case, uh, this was Nicole having a back-to-school meeting with her staff. So we filled that in, got rid of all those barriers, and now it's quite a nice space to have large groups. Uh, and then, again, uh, classroom on the left, carpet paint, new whiteboards, door hardware, huge difference, uh, in these buildings this summer as we've gone through those. And then there's a smart lab on the right. And then Centennial also was a school where you had the valley that you walked into to get to the front door, and we pulled all of that out, um, to the outside, similar to, um, Shawshin, uh, but got more of the offices out to the front because we had more space. So making a secure vestibule. And there, again, you have new cafeteria and cafeteria furniture on the left, a new updated classroom on the right with new furniture. And then, uh, corridors look totally different here with new flooring on the left, and then also replaced the carpeted gym floor there, uh, with a rubberized, uh, gym floor. So in each of those three schools, it's made a huge difference, I think, uh, on the learning environments in those schools, just with the work that we did. Early College Academy, we also went through, uh, with new carpet and paint, so you can see some of the newer furniture, um, carpet and paint in the, uh, uh, opening or the vestibule front student area. And on the right, there's a new classroom. So we worked with Ames College on that. That's a science classroom on the left, has LVT flooring, and then the student center on the right, again, with new furniture and carpet. And then at Prairie Heights Middle School, before we started the bond, Prairie Heights was our newest school, right? Newly built school. So coming around with this bond, we didn't need to do a lot of refresh, but they did have Career and College Readiness Dollars that they elected to use toward a greenhouse. So this greenhouse is similar in size to the main greenhouse at Greeley West, the main part of that greenhouse at Greeley West. And we did some reconfiguring with some outdoor planners there, um, so they can support, uh, beginning of an ag program at Prairie Heights and also their science classes, because these kids will move to, uh, Greeley West. And so that is complete. And then at Gap, uh, we are doing a front vestibule there. We are doing that in-house, um, with our people, and so it is in progress. There is our progress. We cut a hole for the vestibule, and we haven't boarded up until we get the materials in, uh, to complete that job. So, um, future work, um, we need to, uh, finalize our proceeds budget, which will take us a few months to see, uh, how money trickles down from contingencies. Um, we have to work on two-year warranties with all the projects that are mentioned above, and, um, begin to start moving maintenance data into a database for future planning, uh, for bond work, um, et cetera, and update our facility master plan. So we have gone full circle, really, here at the end of the, uh, summer, this summer with the, uh, bond, again, in less than five years. And so we'll mark all those at the bottom, completed probably here in another month, except for Gap. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Henson, and congratulations getting to the end of this. This has been a monumental task for a lot of people, but especially for you. So thank you very much.
Well, our department, it's everybody in our facilities department has worked real hard on that. I get to speak here, you know, to you about this. But all of our managers, in addition to their daily work, getting in blueprints, getting in buildings, getting on walks with contractors and making sure things were done the way they're supposed to be done, you know, they put in a lot of work. So, thank you.
Yeah. Congratulations. Do you think we have a few more questions for you? Dr. Campos Pitsy?
More a comment than a question, but this summer I traveled around out of state and now I pay attention to school buildings and what they look like across our country. And our buildings are so pretty. I am so proud of our community for caring about public education and making sure that our families and our kids feel cared for. I hadn't seen Centennial like until these pictures and it just, I, it fills my heart with joy just I know as parents drop their kids off at these schools that they know that the community cares.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Campos Pitsy. Mr. Ozari?
I also just have a comment. Due to my work on the Historic Preservation Commission, I know a lot about the history of this school district and the buildings that have been erected over the years from the early ward schools to the nineteen-sixties with our famous round buildings. This is the most amount of construction and building this district has ever seen. And your department and the folks of this community and all your contractors deserve a standing ovation. I mean, it's incredible work. So thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? I'll just echo those thanks and accolades. It is, I think it's five years and we had a pandemic in the middle of those five years to get it done on time, not only under budget, but to be able to do extra things like the CTE Center that we talked about earlier, things that weren't included in the initial bond. I sure hope that our community is proud. We certainly are. And I thank you and again, want to thank our community for stepping up and for passing that bond issue and making this a reality for our students.
Yeah, we did ninety-two million dollars of additional work within the bond. We're able to do that.
Additional ninety-two?
Because of, yes, because of a lot of what I said last spring with Megan and Dr. Pilch, getting our district ready to pass a bond and sell the bonds when we did. We did very well in our proceeds. Enjoy those buildings this fall when you get out to see them, because they're pretty cool. Thank you.
Everybody have one more ribbon cutting, right? Every time, will this be the last ribbon cutting, Dr. Pilch? Okay, because I think I've said the last three times, this is the last ribbon cutting. So I just want to be sure this time. This is the last one. All right. Well, thank you, guys, for being here tonight. Thank you for joining us, whether you're here in person or online. This meeting is adjourned.